Good evening. I would like to call Monday, May 13th, 2024, council meeting in order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone, not speaking by default, to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so have been listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name, and I live at address, and would like to, and would like to speak on favor or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will have the invocation by Reverend Stephen Wedgwood, Christ Church Anglican. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you for inviting me to open this council meeting. Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, we are taught by your holy word that the hearts of rulers and all in government are in your governance, and that you do dispose and turn them as seems best to your godly wisdom. We humbly beseech you so to dispose and govern the hearts of these servants, whom thou has placed in civil authority, that in all their thoughts, words, and works, they may ever seek your honor and glory, and that they may study to preserve this people whom you have committed to their charge in wealth, peace, godliness. Grant this, oh merciful Father, for thy dear son's sake, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. May we remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. May be seated. Clerk Toronto, will you call the role, please?
President McBride.
Present.
Vice President Niskoski.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
I'm present.
All nine present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have to report from subcommittee on minutes.
I do. I have April 22nd, 2024 minutes, and then I will read July 10th and September 11th, 2023 separately. To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April 22nd, 2024 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the July 10th, 2023, and the September 11th, 2023 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. This recommendation for approval is made recognizing that three current members of the council were not seated in 2023, and as such, will be abstaining from any formal approval of old minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
The move and seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Thank you. At this time, we have special business. Clerk Toronto.
Special meeting commemorating National Police Week and the National Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Counselor Warner.
Uh, thank you. I want to thank the, the officers of the department that have come and joined us this evening. And the special resolution commiser- commemorating National Police Week and the National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the women and men of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodges Number 36 and numbers 155 representing the South Bend Police Department and the St. Joseph County Police Department will conduct their annual tribute and memorial service to honor all police officers who have given their lives in the line of duty this Friday, May 17th, 2024. And whereas, since the first recorded death of a constable in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including 15 South Bend police officers, Oscar Christiansen, Samuel Cooper, Louis Keller, Hans Brunt, Fred Boland, Neil McIntyre, Floyd Thompson, Albert Thompson, Charles Barkus Senior, Howard Wagner, Ronald St. Germain, Thomas DeRue Senior, Paul Degooch, Scott Severance, Nick Palazzato, and St. Joseph County Officer James Mumford. And whereas, although South Bend has been fortunate in not suffering any such deaths in recent years, we should all remember and honor the seven Hoosier law enforcement officers who made the ultimate sacrifice during 2023 for their community and our state, including Deputy Sheriff Anson Hacker of the Vanderburg County Sheriff's Office, Master Trooper James Bailey of the Indiana State Police, Michael Robert Keel of the Indiana Department of Corrections, Trooper Aaron Smith of the Indiana State Police, Sergeant Heather Glenn of the Tell City Police Department, Deputy Sheriff John Durham of the Marion County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Sheriff Tim Geier of the Johnsons County Sheriff's Office, along with the other 130 law enforcement officers nationwide who died in line of duty during 2023. And whereas, although nationally, the number in line of duty deaths for 2023 decreased approximately 38% from 2022, the state of Indiana has experienced an increase in deaths from 2022 to 2023. And whereas, our elected officials in our community owe it to the law enforcement officers and their families to remember and honor the great sacrifices that they have made in the name of serving and protecting our city, our county, and our residents. And whereas, although we implore whatever powers exist to keep all law enforcement officers safe, so no new names are added to the memorial in the future, we must never forget or fail to honor all law enforcement officers who make the ultimate sacrifice on our behalf. Now, therefore, be gratefully proclaimed by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. During this National Police Week, we gratefully honor all law enforcement officers who have given their lives in the line of duty. May their numbers grow no more. May we never forget. And may their families and loved ones find peace this 13th day of May, 2024.
Thank you so much. At this time, um, I would like to pause for a moment of silence for the law enforcement that lost their lives. Thank you. I just want to say to our law enforcement that are here tonight, thank you so much for your service um, to this community and through uh, the state and the region, and for all the work that you do and the hard work you do. We appreciate your service and your commitment, especially to uh, our community. And uh, with that said, I will go down to see if council would like to um, add any comments to the resolution. And thank you, um, Counselor Warner for bringing it forward. I would start with Counselor White.
No, just want to add my words of thank you to the officers and to the families who have lost loved ones as well. Uh, we do appreciate all that you do. Every day, we know that when you walk out the door, that danger may be there, but you have been protected. And so I'll continue to lift each and every one of you up. And again, thank you so much for the work that you've done for our citizens, for the state, and for the city of South Bend.
Thank you. Dr. Davis.
Again, I say thank you also for your service that you provide for the city of South Bend. I'm also thankful for those who serve our South Bend schools. As I work in the schools, I appreciate the officers who come and uh, work with us in our schools. And um, you make our place a better place to live, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Tomas Morgan.
I too just wish to extend my gratitude to all of you for the service that you provide to our community. Um, just last week, I finished the South Bend Police Citizens Academy and um, just gained a, a much deeper and profound understanding of the work that uh, each of our officers undertake and the scope uh, of the work that our department has. And um, uh, especially proud that this council has supported the um, security technology in the police department. We know that that helps to keep not just our residents safe, but our police officers safe as well. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Vice President Niskoski.
Um, yes, I'd just like to say thank you to our, our men in uniform and women in uniform. Um, our South Bend Police Department um, is, is, is the best, in my opinion. Uh, I see them out on the streets everywhere. I've had issues over a couple of years that I've been here on the council. They've always responded. Our resource officers that we have now, my hat's off to the two gentlemen that we have right now. And uh, uh, they've done a lot for me. They do a lot in the community. They reach out, they talk, they understand. Uh, they're able to, to, to talk with residents in a way that maybe a misunderstanding could turn out into something much different. And I've witnessed that myself. Um, but God bless you guys for downing the uniform every day. And I hope that this year, we have, we don't have any fatalities at all. I hope you guys are safe, and I want you to know that we are in your debt for your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yes, uh.
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
That's the one I.
I just want to say that uh, I have a brother-in-law that's a state trooper, and I have a nephew that's all the. And as Rachel said, uh, I uh, I, I did Citizen uh, Academy several years ago, uh, think 2017, if I'm not mistaken, and get, gained such a great appreciation and understanding. And I've worked with so many officers as, when I was the director of the group violence intervention. We were there in the middle of the nights to put the shootings and to see what our officers have to go through. I think it gave me a great perspective of what they have to put their, um, their lives in jeopardy and danger to keep our city safe. So again, we commend you all and thank you all for your service, and we honor you on National Police Week. Thank you.
Thank you, um, President McBride. We are really appreciate what you do for our city and our community. I'd like to reiterate what Dr. Davis said about the South Bend schools. As a principal, I've worked very closely with a number of police officers. And your compassion for our students, understanding that they're students, and understanding your role in shaping their, shaping their um, outlook on life is commendable. And we really appreciate you, and we pray for your safety. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Counselor Warner, any additional comments?
Uh, no, just my uh, great honor to be able to present this, and I look forward to uh, being there Friday evening again at 7:30 at the department.
Thank you. Counselor Gooden Rogers.
I'd like to say thank you for your service. Um, I want you to stay safe, stay in prayer. I lost my grandfather doing, doing his tenure as a, a officer. So please, just stay safe, stay definitely in prayer, take care of one another, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, and I don't know if any of you all, or all of you would like to come out and uh, say some comments, a few words? Thank you so much. Yes, if you come into the mic and state your name and your uh, company address, the little one, yep.
Officer Josh Morgan, South Bend Police Department. I'm also the uh, FOP 36 president. Uh, what I'd like to say is, I, I appreciate uh, what you guys have said and uh, your support. It, it matters. Um, the community's support, it matters. Um, and uh, you know, i- i- I know, I know you said in the proclamation, uh, South Bend Police and uh, St. Joe County, but uh, there are several agencies within our county, and uh, you know, in, in light of recent events lately, um, it's vitally important. I mean, we all work together really well, and uh, you know, thank you, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, uh, Sergeant Dan Demler. I'm currently Vice President, FOP 36, working out of 701 West Sample. I too want to say thank you for your words and your support. Uh, throughout our careers, we wind up seeing a lot of adversity and come to be criticized a lot. And when these, these types of things hear, this support is greatly appreciated because it's, to be honest, you know, when we leave, it's not a matter if, it's when something bad's going to happen. So these are the kind of things that keep us going, and on behalf of our members, I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate you. With that, we will move on. There are no um, reports from the city, and there is no action for the committee of the whole or bills on third reading. So that takes us straight to our resolution, Resolution 2416. Clerk Toronto.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 728 Harrison Avenue, South Bend, Indiana 46616, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for Cross Community Incorporated.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President McBride, uh, the Resolution 2416 was heard earlier this evening by the Community Investment Committee and comes forward with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner.
I think I fixed the issues from earlier. Uh, let's see. Good evening. My name is Mark Beeman Duffer with uh, Manager of Business Development with offices on the 14th floor of this building. For consideration today is Bill Number 2416, which is a declaratory resolution uh, for a, let's see. There you go.
Mark, could you please speak to the mic more?
My apologies. Uh, so this is a declaratory resolution for a five-year single-family residential real property tax abatement for property located at 728 Harrison Avenue. So this abatement will provide tax savings for a future homeowner for a new development to be located at 728 Harrison. Uh, on your screen right now are overhead shots and from the uh, that shot from the uh, street. So the petitioner is Cross Community Inc., which is an organization which provides homeownership education for first-time homebuyers. And they're planning to invest $270,000 into the development of a ranch-style house on a currently vacant lot. The house will have around 1,500 square feet and include three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a garage. The inevitable beneficiary of the abatement will be a future homeowner that went through the Cross Committee Homeownership Program. So uh, this slide provides a breakdown of the development and abatement and impact on the property taxes. Current taxes on the property are a little under $150 and are expected to increase to 2,600 uh, once the development is complete. And uh, this assumes an assessed value of 220,000. Uh, during the five-year abatement, total taxes are estimated to come to a little over 13,000. Of that, roughly 7,600 would be abated, uh, with 5,600 in uh, new taxes paid. Uh, this slide provides a further breakdown of the estimated annual taxes and the impact of the abatement. Uh, this uh, summarizes the residential abatement up for consideration today. And uh, Tina Patton of Cross uh, Community is in attendance to help uh, address any questions which the uh, common council may have.
Thank you. Ms. Patton?
Tina Patton, President of Cross Community, offices located 707 Sherman Avenue in South Bend, Indiana. Mark has already talked about the housing, and again, I want to thank you all for allowing me to come to present um, in regard to Cross Community and what we're doing on the northwest side of South Bend. What I wanted to talk about just for just a second is really what sets Cross Community apart. And one of the uh, great aspects about Cross Community is our homebuyers program. Um, and what we are doing really to prepare the homebuyers to actually be in the homes, and that is our homebuyers program. What that is doing is it is allowing participants to receive some financial literacy um, in regard to credit, debt repair. Uh, we talk about budgeting, and I think one of the things that is different from our program because we understand that many organizations do financial literacy for home buying. But one of the things that I believe that sets our program apart is that we actually have uh, professionals to come in to talk with our homebuyers. And so we have realtors to come, and we have um, real, um, we have um, uh, insurance agents to come. We also have bankers to come that we pair our homebuyers up with to, to give them the, the proper products that they might uh, need to actually get the mortgages. And so we prepare homebuyers to become homeowners. And so with you supporting this um, proposal to allow us to have these tax abatements, again, it allows our homeowners to um, to make these homes more affordable for them. So that you're investing not only just in the homes, but you're investing in the future of this community and of this neighborhood. And so I thank you for hearing me. I thank you for listening, and I will address any questions that anybody has again this afternoon.
Thank you so much. I will turn to my colleagues to see, are there any questions for the petitioner, the presenter?
I have a question.
Yes.
The um, the classes that you um, described, they sound just, they're just magnificent. I was wondering, would it be a, a breach of confidentiality if we sat in on a class?
Not at all.
Okay, I'll get with you and find out when I could come.
Certainly. Anyone else? If not, I will turn to the public. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 2416? You may come up and do so, or if there's anyone online. Seeing none? I will turn to if there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution 2416 in the audience or virtually.
I do not see anyone online or in the public that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion is now closed. I will turn back to the council. Are there any comments? Counselor Lee?
People that, that get housing counseling, they, they become more successful in being able to understand what it takes in order to have a home and to maintain that home. So we want to applaud you all for all of the work that you're doing and the transformation. If you have not seen it, you need to come over to the Harrison area, um, and even on Sherman and, and see the transformation of an area that was once um, left out and forgotten. So thank you for the vision. Thank you for uh, providing the resources for individuals. And when we talk about affordable home ownership, being able to make the numbers work for individuals is so important. And so thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion to adopt Bill 2416.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Toronto.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
Thank you. Resolution 2416 has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bills on first reading? Clerk Toronto?
First reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property alley at 513 North Hill Street, beginning at a point in the west line of Hill Street, 66 degrees right west, said point being distance of 198.12 degrees northerly of the north lane of Cedar Street, 82 degrees right west, also the point being the northeast corner of Parcel Bearing Street. Bearing Street of Parcel Bearing, St. Joseph County, index number 018-5008-019.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 2224 to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee for public hearing and third reading for May 28, 2020.
Remove.
Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to carry. At this time, we will move to unfinished business from council.
Just like to say that, again, continually since our last meeting, share our condolences with our councilwoman, Sherri Bowden Simpson. Glad to have participated in the services for her father, Mr. Maxie D. Bowden, Sr., and continue to keep her family in our prayers. And also was glad to join Councilman Troy Warner at the South Bend Fire Retirement Dinner. And so was glad to be there to celebrate those officers who have served us and who are retired.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'll...
I'd like to just thank every... is this unfinished business? Just thank everyone for their cards. Thank you, Logan and your wife, for giving me a card and my... even people in my district just sending me an email, lifting me up. I really thank you. And last Monday, I was... because such much was going on, I didn't get a chance to thank the mayor for the proclamation given to... for the 30th commemoration of the genocide in Rwanda. They... Francois Bainghana and his family really appreciated, really appreciated that. So thank you to the mayor and Clerk Toronto for helping that to happen.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn. Is there any new business?
Yes, I have some new business. As Chairperson of the Community Relations Committee, I've reached out to Dr. Green, South Bend School Corporation, the president, and we've had a talk. And we're soon going to be working on getting... trying to get back together. It'll be after June 15.
Thank you. Vice President Nizgatsky.
Thank you. Just reminder, I heard in... I believe when you was doing the review for the meetings about the budget. So do we have a kickoff to the budget? Is this Friday? It's at 11:30, be here in the council chambers. That's mostly for departmental... I mean, everybody's, you know, can come, but mostly that's where the department heads get with the administration. They talk about the kickoff of the budget, what it looks like, just some general terms that they really talk about. And I would also say, from our perspective, I think it's a good thing to maybe just sit in and listen to what they're saying, just to have a grasp on it as a kickoff. Working with Kyle as the chair for the Budget Committee, I let him know today that I would request your budget. So if you could get that to me by June 1st, and then I will compile that report of all of our... separately, but compile it to him and then send it to him for the budget requests for each council member. And that I'll do by June the 17th. So if there's any questions, if anybody wants to inbox me, please feel free to reach out to me, especially for our new council members. If you need any guidance on what that looks like, I can always give you an example of some of our previous ones that were submitted. So you have an idea of the report that I send forward, and then I'll also send it to all the council members, just as a reminder.
Anyone else? At this time, I will turn to the Privileges of the Floor. And disrespectful ruder disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person may result in individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her time. Thank you. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the Privileges of the Floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review. And topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Logan Foster, 1138 College Street. So three weeks ago, my speech was shut down at this Privileges of the Floor, and I sent all nine council members and the parliamentarian an email, and I've not received a response to that email. So first, I would like to cite Municipal Code, Section 22, Subsection I. The council shall have the power to investigate the affairs of any person with whom the city has entered or is about to enter into a contract with. Now, here in my possession is a contract that the city has with Nizgatsky Plumbing. And in that contract is signed by David Nizgatsky, who was then the president of Nizgatsky Plumbing. And then the next document I will go here is from the City of South Bend Office of Diversity and Inclusion, where in 2020, the City of South Bend paid Nizgatsky Plumbing $765,000. So my speech, three weeks ago, was shut down because it says, "Issues over which the city did not have jurisdiction." But my speech did have jurisdiction according to the municipal code. So instead of waiting and letting me speak and then finding out whether I had jurisdiction or not, you guys jumped the gun, so to speak, and you guys were incorrect. So also, in this contract, to further my claim of whether it was relevant or not, the contract that David Nizgatsky signed with the City of South Bend says, "The contractor agrees not to discriminate against or intimidate any employee or applicant for employment in the performance of this contract." And it goes on about race, sex, gender. The young lady that worked for David Nizgatsky resigned because she was intimidated by his harassment.
What I'm going to do right now, Senator Nizgatsky, he has resigned from Nizgatsky Plumbing and retired over a year ago. And what you're bringing again before the council is not business-related, that the council has jurisdiction. Your issue and as the state representative, they are two different entities. The South Bend Common Council do not have oversight over the state senator's office. So again, I will tell you, I appreciate your comments, but I will again cut those comments off if this is the same information that is leading to. Because we do not, other than you coming to us to express your opinion, we have no jurisdiction or oversight to reprimand a state senator. So again, with the same spirit I had last week, I have the same sentiments this week. He is no longer an employee of Nizgatsky Plumbing, and so I don't... I do understand what you're trying to get.
That is incorrect, though. If you go to Nizgatsky Plumbing's website, David is on there.
He is not active. He's a family member, but he is not employed at Nizgatsky Plumbing.
Can somebody please go to the website right now?
He is not employed there.
So I am...
He has retired.
So as I stated before...
Quit badgering my family.
I got it, Vice President. So again, that is no action that this city council has jurisdiction over, nor would we entertain. If a council member would like to personally, outside of here, would like to comment with you or communicate with you, that would be the discretion, because I do not have jurisdiction over a council's personal preference or opinion as a council person or as an individual representative. But as the council as a whole and this platform, that will not be addressed.
Can I ask the parliamentarian for clarification on subsection or Section 22, Subsection I?
You absolutely can, absolutely.
Because my understanding of investigating the affairs of any person with whom the city...
He is no longer employed at Nizgatsky Plumbing, but I will turn to the parliamentarian,
The common council has jurisdiction, and I yet to hear anything over which this common council has jurisdiction.
And they don't have jurisdiction over the finances and the $700,000 that they spend?
Not in the past, no, sir.
No, and there's no current contracts?
Not for David Nizgatsky, who is retired.
Okay.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dawn Foster, 132 Chapin Street. Business United War is a new nonprofit that we've just put together and organized, and we're also going to be opening up to citizens and join too. But basically, it's got a couple of purposes. One, to help the City of South Bend, but directly it's to help the homelessness solutions. And we're just have sent emails and just invitations to all of you to... we like to meet one-on-one with each of you. Counselor Mrs. White, thank you so much for attending. She was great. She had contributed to some of the stuff as we're expanding upon it to meet with each of you. But what we'd like to do is it's almost solutions thinking outside the box, a little bit what's happening with what's happening in South Bend. And really, it's trying to address a couple of things of safety and crime. We've actually done a deep dive. We've gone into... it's taken some time to put this together. But it's... we've gone into the gangs a little bit. We've gone into the drugs, how they're being flowed through here. We've gone into the homelessness as far as the streets, talking to them. We could talk to the panhandlers. We've gone into the encampments between... from here all the way to Michigan City. We met with some of the people at Michigan City, the police, some of the things that they're doing and their situations, how they're handling it. We've contacted a variety of other cities throughout the country, and we're trying to put together a thing to try to make change for us, working on trying to unite the churches in a variety of different ways. There's so many good things that are happening in South Bend. It has a huge heart. A lot of churches are doing wonderful things. We think about that someone could be fed every seven days a week downtown South Bend. It's really a beautiful thing to see happening. I just think that we have to get more involvement for the police. I think it's wonderful what you said. We looked at that as an independent outsource, not that we're the brains. We're just trying to unite as many people as we can to get involved in all this. But the police have done actually a fantastic job. They're... you know, the city gets such a hit with how bad the crime and how unsafe it is and the rankings where it is. It's not because we need more policemen. It's not that they need to do a better job. They need help from us. They need help from the people, the people who you guys represent. We need to get more involvement throughout the city. And we have some ideas of how to help that. I've met with the police a few times. We go to a lot of the police meetings and met with Sergeant Born to talk about some of these ideas and concepts. We've got good feedback. We need to put a plan together for the mayor. I've talked to the mayor, and I've told him that I try to have something together, but it's not just I'm having something together. It's all of us having something together. Three minutes are up?
30 seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds. So just love to meet with you guys one-on-one. Pastor Lee, it was great to meet you early on, but we had nothing prepared for you then, but we do now. So we just welcome it. If you guys can't get to us this week, maybe by the end of the week, let us know what you can meet in the next two weeks. We just love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joanne Kelly Cogdum. I'm the CEO of Naxos Neighbors located at 1143 East Ireland Road. Naxos Neighbors is a harm reduction technology company, and we are dedicated to working with people who use drugs and people recently in recovery and listening to them to understand how we can keep them safe from what we previously knew as the opioid epidemic, but I'd now like to state as the unregulated drug epidemic. We started in 2021, and since that time, we have provided 83 Narcan distribution and training in the City of South Bend. We trained 1,700 residents. We have distributed 2,000 doses of Narcan. And we did all of that without any funding other than $1,000 from the Drug Free St. Joe County. So we worked with the Health Department, and we worked for Drug Free St. Joe County, and that is the only funding we received. We are tired. We are worn out, and we want you to know that we are not doing it anymore because we can't continue to do this for free. And why we've been doing this in the last three years, this St. Joe County has lost 100 residents a year to opioid overdose. 75% of those are in the City of South Bend. And that means that South Bend has lost approximately 200 employed persons who are using unregulated drugs to overdose. That means that South Bend now has approximately 3,000 families who have lost a loved one to overdose. And that means that South Bend now has approximately 2,500 residents who are living with long-term chronic conditions from surviving an overdose. All of that, and I am here to say that I am aware that the South Bend has been part of the opioid settlement funds and that South Bend's part of that funding is approximately $1 million. I've not heard anything about what South Bend is doing to make sure that we don't continue to lose these lives year after year. We actually have in South Bend an overdose rate that is more than double the national average. We are rivaled with Indianapolis. That's where we are. And the money's not here. We're not training city employees how to use Narcan. We're not training teachers how to use Narcan. In 2016, I was teaching adult ed in Elkhart and had a student overdose in my classroom. And as a teacher, I didn't need to know what was happening, and I didn't know what was happening. And that's where we still are right now. I got into this not to do Narcan training, but to provide technology to save people's lives. But I couldn't believe that nothing was happening in this city. We had the Health Department employee. We have employees at Oaklawn that are providing Narcan training, and that's it. And I don't... I don't think I need to tell you how overworked the Health Department is. And Oaklawn doesn't do those trainings besides in the jails and in their facilities. So that means our community members don't have it. It's just not even available. I am regularly going to life treatment center. And for the last year, I asked how many people in here, people who have been in recovery for 30 days or less, have received Narcan training? And last year and this year, I got the exact same numbers, 15%. These are the people that are at the highest risk of overdose in our community, people coming out of incarceration and people coming out of recovery. And 15% of them are receiving the information to save their lives right now. So I am asking for your help in understanding what is the plan for this money to be spent? And I am also asking that you give us an opportunity, myself and my partner here, to talk about what our plans are. Thank you.
Are you going to stay right after?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I will...
Thank you.
I will get your information and give you... I will also speak with the mayor and administration about the allocation of those funds and give an update and also get some information from you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brandy Anderson Willis, 59955 St. Joseph Street, St. Joseph Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I am the founder of a statewide consulting agency called Integrated Recovery Support Services. And what we do is provide peer recovery trainings, certifications, and other peer supports for persons in our community. We have partnered recently with Naxos Neighbors, Joanne, and the reason for us coming together is to try to figure out how we can do our best to support our community and especially those that are coming out of incarceration. Not only are we losing folks to opioids, to the epidemic, but we're also losing people, you know, to the criminal justice system. It's really hard for folks to get out of the criminal justice system and just get a job and just get things back on track without having some type of help. I have worked in this field for a little over eight years and have worked along persons who have come out of incarceration. And they need things like birth certificates and IEDs and things like that. And a job is usually the hardest thing, the toughest thing for them to find, especially one that they enjoy doing. And so what my partner and I have come up with is a prison-to-peer pipeline. And this is a program where we have partnered with Adult Education here in St. Joe County, Goodwill, Second Chance Program, and Work One. And this is a program, it's kind of like a six-month program, and it would be targeting persons that are coming out of incarceration. So maybe people who are living in transitional housing, people coming out of treatment. And what we want to do is train them to be peer recovery coaches, peer support professionals to go out and help those who are still in active addiction. It takes people sometimes who have that lived experience to be able to make that connection with others in the community who haven't quite found the way out yet. And so this job would be a... or this program would be a six-month program, and we would have all the supports. Goodwill, Adult Education would help from helping people get their GEDs or, you know... or, you know, equivalencies, high school equivalencies, to getting a peer certification, to where they can get a job. We will connect them within that six-month period, as well as give them on-the-job training through the Naxos Neighbors app, where they would be responding to overdoses and also providing community education. And so the employers that we have at the end of this six-month program are committed to hiring these folks. And we've already got folks on board that are saying, yes, we would love to be a part of that, to give people a chance to do something different. And so what I'm asking is, one, to have someone maybe meet with us and talk more about our program and what it involves and possibly being able to help us with funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same thing with you. I can get the information from you after the meeting. It'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Adam Scholz, eight eighteen South Thirty-first Street. I'm the CTO of Naxos Neighbors, Joanne's my partner. Over the past three years that we've been in business, we were able to train over one hundred and fifty South Bend residents, St. Joe County residents, and even a couple from Stark County. Several people have come to become an opioid overdose responder as one of, what was one of our initial app features. And everyone is excited. They love to help. This community is here and ready to help us out. And it's been a struggle, as Joanne mentioned, with the funding. So we are thoroughly excited to hear what the city plans to do with the opioid overdose settlement funds. That's said right. And to work with you to find a better way for this community to help everybody out with some reaching hands, with what Brandy had just mentioned, we're partnering with her. And, you know, we can talk to people and everybody says, oh, my gosh, let me know. And we're definitely encouraged by you. Thank you for saying you'd like to stick around and hear some more about us, because we've been here and we need help, support, funding, and ways to, hey, everybody say, hey, here we are. We've been on Facebook. We've been on marketing, and it's real rough out here. So all of your buy-in, more Health Department buy-in, all of that stuff is going to help us all make a better county and save people's lives, because there's no need for it. And people don't need to be afraid to push a button and say, hey, somebody's overdosing. People need to know how to use Narcan. I did not know anything about it until I met Joanne and met the students that we started this with, and it was phenomenal. And, you know, and now here I am. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Definitely a much-needed field. I am Narcan-trained as well, so it's saved lives for sure. Name and address for the record.
Sharon Benicki, thirty-eight twenty-two Ford Street. I'm not sure, I know Sheila knows all about this, but I'm not sure how many of the rest of you know, but on April thirtieth, we had another shootout in front of my house. It's not a drive-by, because you know, anything worth doing is worth doing well. Again, I apologize for texting you so late that night. I'm texting her. I'm like, we just had another shootout. She's like, well, how was the police response? I said, I think we have every officer in town here. They had all the streets blocked off. Purely timing, the next day, the city was out to mark for the new light pole. The pole was installed May third. The neighbors are ecstatic. Some of them think that we just pulled this rabbit out of the hat and there's a shooting. Next day, you get a light. Only you guys know that for two years I fought for this light, and the neighbors want to express their gratitude. Maurice, who Sheila met, texted me, he goes, Sharon, they're putting the pole in right now. You tell Sheila I am so excited. So I text Sheila, Maurice wants you to know how excited he is. I got home from work that night. The neighbors were out looking at the pole like it's this amazing thing. Last night, the neighbors were outstanding under the pole, talking about the pole. We realize it's not going to solve our problem, but it gives the neighborhood hope. It shows them that people are listening and that if they get involved, even if it's just by sending me here to nag you, that, you know, you keep going, keep going, it pays off. And so the neighbors on Chicago Street just want you all to know how excited and grateful they are to finally have their light pole. Thank you. Sheila, you got a minute afterwards?
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
We have Sue Kism online. Sue, can you unmute yourself and Matthew will share his screen?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
I wanted to make sure. Sue Kessam, four two-two Kennedy Drive, South Bend. As, I want to start with a question. How many of you have used or aware of both Siri and Alexa? I mean, these have been used for years now. And so that means that we've all been using AI for quite a while for customer service. AI's been around for about twenty years. There's something new, though, called the AI Google Agent, which is really exciting. And I want you guys to consider this for three-one-one. It would save probably half a million dollars a year if we went to AI. And what I want to do is play for you how this sounds, because it's really hard to even tell it's a computer at this point. So if you could, I think, oh, nine twenty, well, it's four seconds. Go ahead and play the video if you would. I'd like you guys to see this. Thank you.
The audio won't go.
Sue, we're having issues with our audio for YouTube, so we will have to share the video with council. I'll forward the link to them.
Okay, so basically, if you start it around nine minutes and twenty-four seconds, you'll hear that it really doesn't even sound like a computer. The great thing about it is the whole conversation's recorded. The computer actually fulfills something for the person. For example, in our case, it would be like, you know, if someone calls for code enforcement and they want to file something. And then, at the point the computer can't answer the question, it does a seamless handoff to a human and it apprises the human of exactly the conversation and what's coming up. Just seamless. It's absolutely phenomenal. This is something that Siri and Alexa have done for over a decade, but now you're going to be able to see what happens behind the scenes. The other great thing is that the AI can handle multiple languages, and we have a lot of refugees coming into South Bend as well. So it can pick up on that and do that as well. So I do hope you'll play it. It's really phenomenal. I'm really excited about what AI can do, and AI can save us a lot of money and really make people, like instantly help them. This whole interaction was two minutes. That combined with the chatbot on the city website, I think would really increase customer service. So I'd appreciate you considering this before the budget comes up.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
Thank you for sending it to us. And I will happily turn this over to at-large councilmember Tomas Morgan, who has a comment.
Thank you, Ms. Kessam. I just want to thank you for your recommendation. I know you emailed all of us on council with the same information. I did have a conversation with our Chief Innovation Officer in the Department of Innovation and Technology and connected the two of you so that you can have a conversation about this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Clerk Torado?
I do not see anyone online or from the public that wishes to speak.
Thank you. With that said, we stand adjourned. Good night.